Now, if you could join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as it is. Just trying to get rid of it now. Okay. All right, well, let's see. This day in history, does anybody have anything of this day in history? I do have one thing. On June 9th, 1973, almost 10,000, or I should say almost 100,000 people came to Belmont near New York City to see if Big Red would become the first horse in 25 years to win the Triple Crown. Does anybody know what the name of that horse was?
Secretariat.
Yes, it was. It was Secretariat. He won the Triple Crown. He completed the 1.5 mile race in a record 2 minutes 24 seconds, back in nearly 3 seconds off the track record set by Galian in 1957. He also won by record 31 lengths. So, another little interesting point, that the jockey who was riding the horse and rode him in the other two races said that in Belmont, he lost total control of Secretariat and that horse sprinted into history on his own accord. So that's kind of an interesting tidbit of him also. ESPN also ranked Secretariat number 35 on the list of all top 50 athletes at North America, which is the only non-human on that list. So, pretty cool. Does anybody else have anything in history? Alrighty. Let's see, some of the special days. Happy anniversary Paige, congratulations.
Thank you.
Almost a full year. Well, it is a year then, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm not sure of any other birthdays. Does anybody know of birthdays I don't have any lists of? Hang on, Jacob's got one coming up.
What, is he gonna be 21?
22, I think.
Oh, okay.
And Dr. Woodruff is gonna be, and his wife Nancy are gonna have an anniversary on June 15th. So, that's what I have as far as anniversaries and birthdays. Dr. Conkle, do you have a humor of the day? Oh, is Dr. Conkle here?
No.
Oh, okay. Does anybody have any jokes they want to share?
None that can be said here.
Okay, that's what I'm worried about. All right, Carl, do you want to do some sad or happy dollars? This a minute, I gotta unmute you there, buddy.
Happy dollars.
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
I thought I'd wear my Father's Day gift from my granddaughter for when I went to OU. Just for our speaker. That'll cost me a buck.
There you go.
Got a happy dollar too. My grandkids are coming for the weekend.
Nice.
Hopefully, they won't get in any trouble.
Yep. Well, I'll throw a happy dollar in. My daughter Nicole's birthday was last Friday and we celebrated it on the boat. We had a beautiful day.
It's a yacht.
We were on, hey, we were on my boat, not your yacht. It always gives me a hard time. It says right on the dash, Tiara Yachts. It goes, "It's not a boat, it's a yacht."
Yeah, same with like the driveway drinking thing. Like if you need an extra person on your boat, like, I mean, here I am.
When we're allowed, we have a Rotary meeting on the boat, I mean, the yacht.
Okay, I have a happy dollar. I have a few. Well, there's just kind of a big one, a pretty big one. So, of course, I celebrated my anniversary yesterday. We didn't do anything. We had burgers on the grill for dinner too, so, but it was really nice. I drove to my parents' house Sunday morning to pick up our cake that was in the freezer. And I did never got a piece of cake at our wedding, so it was nice to have a piece a year later, I guess. And I still have it and it's fantastic and I'll be eating it for the rest of the week. But the second thing, and probably more important, so I am going back to grad school this fall. So I'm going to Penn State for the early intervention program. So I will be licensed and specialized for helping little ones, zero to three, identify some maybe developmental delays. And it's really cool. And I get paid to go back to school, so, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Also, and I was getting texts, "Steve, I'm waiting in the waiting room."
I'm in.
You're in? Welcome. I forgot I had to look for that. That was the first time I was using the waiting room.
Well, thank you very much for letting me join.
No problem. You're more than welcome. Okay, I'm gonna have to keep an eye on that. Sure, it's trying to be more secure with the waiting room. Glad everyone could join us. I'd like to introduce our speaker, Jenny Stotts today. She gave me a brief bio and a full bio. But looking at her accomplishments, I think it's well worth reading her full bio because it's very, she leads a very busy and interesting life. Jenny Stotts currently serves as the membership chair in Rotary District 669. She is a member of the Paul Harris Society and the Bequest Society. She is a charter member of the Rotary Club of Athens Sunrise. Her favorite Rotary activities include Ryla and Paddle for Polio Plus, an annual event featuring kayaks. She developed and is leading a large-scale service event called Big Project, which benefits her hometown by bringing together more than a dozen Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions, and civetan clubs, which she describes as her dream project. Stotts is an executive director of Athens Casa Gal Program and regional coordinator of Southeast Ohio Casa. She is a licensed social worker and certified trauma specialist and a trained forensic interviewer. She has devoted her career to serving foster children. This work is near to her heart as she was adopted from the Ohio Child Welfare System and grew up in a working foster home. She and her husband, also a Rotarian, continue the tradition, building the family through adoption as well. Stotts was recently recognized in her community and region as a Young Professional of the Year, Community Leader of the Year, Volunteer of the Year, and Ohio University's 5 and Under 35 Featured Alumby. She serves as the Chair of the federally mandated Child Welfare Review Panel on permanency and was elected to the National Leadership Council for Casa. In addition to Rotary, Stotts volunteers her time with the Make-A-Wish Foundation and Child Conservation League. She described herself simply as mother, wife, friend, social worker, Rotarian, and trouble-making millennial. I love that. I really wanted to read all that because I don't know how she even found time to come and talk to us today. So we really appreciate you showing up. Thank you, Dennis.
Well, thank you so much for having me and embarrassing me by reading all of that. And thanks, John, for reaching out to me and asking me to come and join you today. I'm actually working, yesterday I was working in the courthouse, but today I'm actually home, so I'm tuning in from my patio. I feel like I fit in with your club because most of your happy dollars were leisurely activities and we did a lot of that too. We also, we definitely have a boat, not a yacht, but we have a boat and we go out on the river. We're right by the Ohio River. So, we spent the time, our, you know, first time out this year, out on the river, on our big river boat. And that was really fun. Our kids spent, I think they rode for five miles on a tube behind us. So they social-distanced about 50 feet behind us all day. And I'm actually tuning into you live from my backyard patio where last night, we actually, we have a projector screen out here and we watched a movie last night. So we've been relaxing pretty hard down here in Stotts' household, so, tuning in live from my patio. So I think I was asked to talk a little bit about Rotary Happy in the time of COVID. And first, for those of you that have never heard me talk about Rotary Happy, I thought I would first just explain what that is. And it's my own brand of weird, my own brand of, you know, why I'm in Rotary, why I think it's important. And what my Rotary Happy is, is probably different than each of you because, you know, we're all drawn to this and we all get and give different things with Rotary. So for me, a lot of it is centered around building member experiences. As someone within my district, I serve to support other, support clubs and support the development of clubs and engagement within clubs and hopefully the growth of Rotary within my own district. So I spend a lot of time thinking about and researching that member experience and how we can grow and enhance that member experience so that we can grow our clubs. And I think it's also important that as an organization, as a worldwide organization, we know why we're growing. And sometimes I ask that question even among Rotary leadership and they kind of say, "Well, yeah, we just need to grow," but can't really put your finger on why we need to grow. And I don't think we need to grow just to put impressive numbers up on the scoreboard. I don't think we need to grow so we can be bigger than the Lions Club. I think that we need to grow because it expands our capacity to do good in the world. And that's what's most important to us. So I hope by the end of this conversation, you will all have a little bit better idea of what Rotary Happy is to you. And we're gonna start, I'm gonna ask you a very simple question. And I don't know if you all knew that there would be a test today, but I hope you studied. And my very simple question, and you can use the chat box or unmute yourself and answer this question, but answer it very quickly. Don't think about it too much. Don't try to impress anyone with your answer. But it's very simple. Why are you a Rotarian? And so I'd love for you to put it in the chat box or unmute yourself and say why. But this is a quick answer. Should, it may take you a couple of seconds to answer.
To help others.
To help others? Thank you, John. Who else? I didn't quite catch that, David. You said to help others?
Community service.
Community service, yep.
Give back.
To give back? Anyone else, why are you a Rotarian? To help others, I see on the chat box.
To connect with some local people.
To connect with local people?
Be involved.
To be involved. So here's the thing, when I ask this question, I actually already know the answers. Someone says, "Someone asked me to get involved." So, I asked that, I've been, you know, I've been talking with Rotary Clubs and Rotary Districts all around the world. And I ask that, I start every talk asking that very same question, "Why are you a Rotarian?" Service, 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 community, helping the community, connecting with others. I have good friends that are in Rotary. And so what that tells me is that people join and people stay in Rotary because of the good that they can do and the people with whom they do it. So, right, that's certainly why I've stayed in Rotary over the years. And for those of you who, you know, know a little bit about me, I was actually a part of a Rotary Club that ended. And I left a Rotary Club and I, because of some, you know, very toxic and very negative member experiences that were going on in that organization. And I think knowing this good that Rotary could do and knowing what our mission was and the people that I could do it with, that's what kept me in Rotary and what led to the eventual chartering of a new club and kind of building a very Rotary Happy Club as a result. So I think it's important that we remember that. Why are you a Rotarian? Why does this matter? Why is it important that you're connecting here on Tuesdays at lunchtime via Zoom? Why is that important and why does it matter to you? So I just hope that you'll keep that in mind and think about it often. So, I want to talk a little bit about kind of how to stay Rotary Happy in the time of COVID. And how to just kind of taking care of ourselves and taking care of others during this time where there are shelter-in-place orders, during this time where we are social distancing, during a time where we're not sure how to engage in service in a safe way from a public health perspective. So, I want to first talk about, a little bit about why we do that though. Why is it important right now? So, a lot of people, I think in the Rotary world, know me as the Rotary Happy Girl. But a lot of folks don't know, and what Steve read in my bio is that I'm actually a social worker. I've spent my entire career working with children and families that have experienced trauma. I'm also a trauma specialist, so I completely nerd out on the science of how we heal and recover from trauma. What happens when we experience adversity, what happens on a neurological level, and then how we recover from that. And a lot of my work's focus and a lot of my research focus has been on this concept of resiliency and resilience. It's really a pathway forward. And I think, I think about that a lot on a person level because of my work. But I've also been thinking about how can we apply those concepts to Rotary right now? How can we build resilient Rotary Clubs that can become leaders during this time where the world, you know, feels a little upside down for a lot of reasons? So how can Rotary use, you know, we use on leverage all of the great things that we know Rotary brings to all of us in order to be able to build a path forward and using those concepts of resilience? So a couple of the things that we know is that when you connect with other people, you experience a biological benefit from that connection. Same thing when we express intentional gratitude to one another and we kind of crave those feelings. So I want to tell you a story and hold with me for a second because you're gonna think, "This is not a Rotary story. Why is she telling this?" But just bear with me. In January of 2020, I bought an electric tea kettle. Stick with me here. I bought this tea kettle. Now, before that, I drink tea every day. I'm, you know, I'm one of those new age hippies. I do yoga and all that stuff. So I drink tea every day and I was heat, I would just always heat up tea on my stove. But my kids have started to drink tea and I was getting worried. I didn't want them using the stove. And so I researched, I found this electric kettle that could sit on our countertop, bought it. It's amazing. Within one week of owning it, I bought a second one. I ordered a second one to take to my office because I just thought my coworkers would like it too. Within one week of it being at my office, my coworker bought one for her house. I've also sent two of them to get, as gifts to people. I've actually purchased them and packaged them and shipped them to other people. I've told, I don't know how many people at this point, about this kettle, how much I like it. Our family uses it every day for so many things. I can't believe I waited this long to get one. It's basically the answer to every question I never knew I had. And it's all because of this kettle. Now, here's what I think, you know, in terms of applying this tea kettle principle to Rotary. Let's think about why I'm telling people about this kettle. Why is it important? Why am I talking to you about this kettle right now? We're supposed to be talking about Rotary and service projects. But here I am, talking about this electric tea kettle. It's red, by the way. I don't know if that changes your, you know, influences your opinion of this kettle, but it's red. It's very nice and shiny. But let's apply why I'm doing that. Let's apply the science of the human behavior to why I'm doing that. So think about a time that you've visited a new restaurant, you know, all the way back in February when you were still going to restaurants. Think about a time that you went to a restaurant and tried a new dish. Think about the time that you read a really good book, or you watched a funny movie, or maybe you went out walking your town, you kind of saw the process where you view, or the experience that you've never gone to before.
Starting to have a little audio difficulty with you, Jen.
I'm back. So let's think about why we do that. Why do we want to tell people? Am I better now? Okay. Let's think about why we do that. Why we have this urge to tell people when we experience something good. And the reason why is we experience a neurological benefit when people we care about experience joy. So we experience the release of neurotransmitters, which are chemicals in our brain, like serotonin and dopamine, that are responsible for a structure in our brain called our limbic system, which is kind of where our emotions live within our brain. And it helps us experience joy, experience happiness, experience pleasure. Now, we as human beings, we crave that. So that's why, you know, if you haven't been outside in a while, you kind of crave the sunshine, right, on gray days. You kind of crave being outside or you crave that connection with other people. So let's apply those concepts to Rotary. So if we create member experiences and we create this feeling of Rotary Happy within our own clubs, imagine how much we're talking about that. So I just spent, I don't know, five minutes telling you about my tea kettle. Imagine how much I talked to people about Rotary because of what Rotary means to me, what I am able to accomplish through Rotary. And so I think when we apply that knowledge to how we look at Rotary, how we look at engaging people, how we look at engaging people in service, it ends up being our best recruitment tool, right? It ends up being our best outreach tool because we can't help but share the positive experiences of Rotary with others. We can't help but share all of the good that we're able to do with other people. So as we, you know, kind of chew on that a little bit and think about that. Think about how often are you talking to people about Rotary? You know, are you excited to tell them about Rotary? And if you're not, kind of really going back to the basics of why you're involved, why it's important, and what you're able to accomplish through Rotary. So a couple of the things during this time during COVID, it's a challenge to come up with service projects, right, because we're people of action. And in Rotary, we like to get out and, you know, be in the community. We like to be out, you know, serving lunches. And, you know, COVID has kind of thrown us for a little bit of a loop there. And I actually think it's kind of an exciting time to be in Rotary because I think we're gonna be more innovative and more flexible than ever before. So I hope that you will, you know, think about some, how you can do service during this time. And I just want to share with you a couple of snapshots that I've seen of things that are happening around the world. One of them is actually a project that I'm leading in my club and it's Rotary Response with Kindness. And it's a postcard project where we are getting referrals from other organizations, from physicians or just from the general public with folks who are extremely self-isolating right now. They're not going to the store or anything like that. They're really isolating because of their vulnerabilities. And so we send them a postcard and offer some help to them, whether it's yard work, running errands, picking up groceries. And then we're able, they can connect with us and then we can, you know, perform that service. My kids actually went and pulled some weeds with a person that we were connected to through the postcard project. So they went and pulled weeds at their house and things like that. So even though we as a club are not doing all of those things together, we're still kind of connecting and talking about them and talking about new relationships that we've built with people in our community that we never would have met otherwise. So that's kind of cool. I've also been seeing lots of clubs getting creative with collecting essential items. I know there's a club in central Ohio, north-central Ohio, that had collected, collected and built toiletry kits. And then they actually just left them kind of on the street during a specific day and time and people were able to come and get them. People with housing insecurity, homelessness, that kind of thing. A project that I'm really pushing for in my district and hope to, to maybe launch by the end of the summer is a Little Free Pantry Project. So if you're familiar with Little Free Libraries, they're, you know, small libraries that people put up. They look like birdhouses almost. But there's also pantry versions of that. And, you know, what a great gift to your community just to, you know, do a pantry and they kind of self-sustain once you get them started. I'm seeing lots of litter cleanup projects. Lots of really cool, cool things that are happening either. Maybe you're together in a large outside area and kind of staying separated a little bit. Or it's members of clubs that are doing service and it's separately done together, which is really cool. And I think one thing that we can all do as Rotarians is, you know, mask-wearing has become quite controversial, whether or not you're wearing one or, you know.
Sorry, Jenny, you're cutting out again. Starting to cut out for some reason.
Am I back now?
You're back now. You fixed it again.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
Sorry about that. I also live in the middle of nowhere, so internet's a little questionable. But I think that, you know, we can apply the four-way test to a lot of these public health recommendations, you know. And so I think that we as Rotarians are leaders in our community. And you're a Rotarian every day, whether or not you have a meeting, whether or not you have a Rotary meeting, whether or not you're wearing your pin that day, you're a Rotarian every day. Or as I like to call it, a Rotarian in the wild. So I think that we all have an opportunity as leaders in our communities to just set good examples about trying to be as safe as we can. Not necessarily to keep ourselves safe, but also to keep others safe and healthy. So, you know, kind of applying the framework of the four-way test even to the decisions that you make in your community is another very small way that we can make a difference and you can kind of live that service above self mantra that we, you know, kind of hang our hat on as Rotarians a little bit. Now, I have a challenge. I do want to hear from all of you and kind of have some conversation. But I have a little bit of a challenge for each of you. It's a three-part challenge. And it's a challenge for you as individuals, but it's a challenge for you as a group too. So my first challenge is a two-part, and my first challenge is to connect. So like I just said, we experience biological benefits when we connect with another human being, right? We experience that positivity and we give it to them. So what a great gift. So my, the first part of this challenge is for you to connect with another Rotarian. Now, it could be with someone that's in your club. It could be a Rotarian from another club, another district, or bonus points if it's a Rotarian from maybe across the world. So there's lots of opportunities to get to know Rotarians all around the world, Rotarians and Rotor actors. So I encourage you to connect with another Rotarian. And I hope that you'll talk about why you're in Rotary. There's something magical that happens when you get a couple of Rotarians talking. So who knows what you'll come up with? The second part of that challenge is to, a part one of my challenge is to connect with someone who's not a Rotarian yet. Or as I like to call them, future Rotarians. And I hope that you'll connect with them and just, just connect. That's step one. Step two is to, remember I asked you all why you're a Rotarian? Is talk to them about that, why you're a Rotarian, why it's important to you. So think of it the same way as, you know, you read that good book and you want to tell them about this good book that you read. Hey, I'm involved in this organization that is, has changed my life from being a part of it, but it's also changing the lives of so many people across the globe. So, you know, share that with them. Share that experience with them. What a great gift for you to give, to give to those that you care about. And then as we know, as I explained, you're gonna experience the benefits of that too when you connect someone you care about and make it to experience that really happy feeling that you feel. My second challenge to you is to dream a little. So this is the time where we need to get a little creative and thinking about service projects and thinking about how we can make a difference in our community and in the world. So I'm trying to count how many people there are. I think there's almost 18, 20 people on this call right now. And I hope you all can dream. The world where you could make an impact right now. So just dream a little bit about that. I gave you a couple of service snapshot ideas.
Sorry, Jenny, we're missing it a little bit again. For some reason, the internet's cutting out.
Okay, I think I'm, am I better?
Yeah.
Um, but I'm at, better, okay. So imagine if you all think on this separately, if you all dream a little bit about what types of service you might be able to do separately. And then you come together next week or the week after and just share those ideas. Because that's the cool thing about even this platform and Rotary Clubs getting together is you have one person that shares an idea. And then before you know it, someone says, "Oh, that's a great idea and we could do this too. And what about this? And what about this?" And it just builds and builds and builds. So I think taking some time intentionally to just think about what are some things that you could do in your community right now, even amidst the social distancing protocols that we all need to be following, what's something that you could do? And, you know, give some thought to that. My third challenge is to express intentional gratitude. So just like I said before about when we connect with another- So, just like I said before about when we connect with another human being, um, and we see someone we care about experiencing joy or experiencing happiness, it has this impact on us. We can do the same with gratitude. So it's not something we think about all that time. We all know about manners. We all know to say thanks when our spouse takes out the, the trash or something. Um, but really thinking about the things that you're grateful for and why you're grateful for them. So on an individual level, you know, really think on that. Um, what are those things that you're grateful for? But then think about it as a club. Um, and how might you express your gratitude to organizations within your community? How might you express your gratitude to leaders within your community? Maybe even with other Rotary Clubs that are around you or with other service organizations that are around you. How could you express that gratitude and share that gratitude in a meaningful way? And you might find that it folds into a service project even. Um, but really thinking about gratitude, um, because we know that it has the, you know, right? We get those little, we give ourselves shots of dopamine and serotonin when we engage in intentional gratitude. So it has a lot of benefits for other people, but it also has a lot of benefits to us, um, in our own, in our own minds as well. So I hope that you will consider those three challenges. It's to connect both with a Rotarian and a future Rotarian. It is to dream a little bit about what kind of service project you could do and to, um, find a way to express and reflect on intentional gratitude, um, and maybe do it every day. Um, you know, what a great gift for yourself, but also a great gift to the world. And finally, I, I do hope that we can, I want to hear from all of you or take questions from all of you. Um, but I hope that you all will take a moment and think about your own Rotary happy and think about how you might share that with someone else and how you might, you know, if you look to some of your fellow Rotarians and you can see that maybe they're, they're not feeling their Rotary happy right now, um, how can you help them get back to it? Um, and certainly share, share it with the world. And it's okay to be, um, obnoxiously proud of your membership in Rotary and, um, share it with the world because, you know, what's the worst that could happen? You might encourage someone to get involved. So, um, and what a gift to the world, Rotarians. So, I appreciate and I'm very grateful for all of your time and your patience with my connection issues. I live, um, in the middle of nowhere on top of a mountain, so my service is always a little questionable. But I'd love to hear from all of you, um, hear question, if you have questions about anything I've talked about or, um, I'd love to hear your own ideas. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much Jenny. Oh yeah, I, I think you've given us some great ideas because you're right, it is hard to, uh, figure out new service projects during these times to, uh, to do our service above oneself and help people out, uh, you know. We're constantly trying to put the word out that if anybody needs home deliveries or meals that we're, we're there to help out. So, I like your challenge and, uh, uh, something for us to definitely, uh, uh, take into consideration. Uh, does anybody have some, uh, questions for Jenny? And I'm hearing the birds in the background now, by the way.
Birds and roosters and who knows what you might hear. Great Danes, kids, slight little funny part here.
Yeah Jenny, I prefaced you last week. I talked about how AJ and Corbin did their, um, little art,
Art show.
Display. Do you want to talk about that a little?
Yeah, so my kids are, um, very involved in Rotary as well. Um, and they, every year for the last several years have hosted an art show at our home where they paint art. And, um, they use the money to raise, um, to address food insecurity in our area. So we live in a town, um, in a, a county, we live and work in counties that are the poorest in Ohio and there's lots of food insecurity. So last year, um, they actually made a meal, um, at our local, we have a local free meal, um, weekly free meal through one of our non-denominational churches. And so they actually hosted the dinner last year with the proceeds from their art show. My, my kids are currently eight and 12, so they, uh, planned their meal. They made meatloaf and all kinds of stuff. So they cooked this meal. It was, it actually happened to be on my husband's birthday, the day that we hosted our, our free community meal. And so they told my husband, Dad, we're going to take you out to dinner for your birthday. But it was actually to the homeless shelter where we served, um, the meal that they worked hard on. And so this year, they had to have a virtual art show, of course, and they've raised just over a thousand dollars in a half an hour art show. And the money this year supports the Peanut Butter and Jelly Project, which provides, um, peanut butter, jelly and bread to local families just to kind of fill the gaps of some of the food services that they, nutrition services that are available. So, um, each year my kids do something like this in the summer and, and that's what they chose to support. Um, support this year. So we're really proud of them and how, they work so hard and they plan everything. It was called Corbin and AJ's Artsy Fartsy Party. So, they plan everything and we, they're my bosses for it. So I just kind of do what they say. They took over my Facebook page to, to do the virtual, um, virtual art show. But yeah, we're definitely a Rotary family.
Hey Jenny, it's Julie. I, I had a comment for you. Um, earlier this year, I had an idea to bring in some new members. And that would be get a list of people that just moved into the area and have an events like maybe every other month and invite them. I mean, then COVID happened. So maybe we could take your postcard idea and at least send a postcard or a brochure to them saying, welcome to the area. You know, um, did you know there's a local Rotary group here waiting to, you know, connect with you?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And, I mean, inviting them virtually, you know, I think there's, I think sometimes we worry about inviting guests in a virtual platform that are potential members. But for a lot of people, it eliminates some of the barriers of walking into a place, you know. So I think even, um, you know, host your events virtually that you were going to do. And I think, you know, reaching out to people, welcoming them. Um, it's kind of a, you know, an old fashioned thing to do, but I really like it, um, in terms of just reaching out to new folks in the area. Um, I know we've done that a couple of times with some like Realtors. We have some Realtors in our club. And, um, just kind of, hey, like, congrats on buying your new house. Welcome to the area. We'd love to have you, um, come and check us out, come get to know the community a little bit. Um, so I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yeah, because it seems like, um, the, um, welcome wagon, you know, doesn't really, isn't really around anymore. And somebody needs to step up and I think it's a, a good fit for Rotary.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great idea.
Okay, anybody else have some questions for Jenny? Well, thank you so much Jenny. It was, uh, certainly a pleasure.
Oh, thank you all for having me and, um, be Rotary happy and tell somebody else about, about it. And maybe you'll, uh, infect them a little bit with Rotary happiness too.
Oh, we certainly will. And, uh, with your permission, we have recorded your, your presentation. If you wouldn't mind, Julie would like to post it,
Sure.
on, on her Nerdonia page, uh, and spread the Nerdonia word through your voice.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you Jen.
Wow.
Okay, just a couple of quick announcements. Uh, again, please don't forget to, uh, give to the Emergency Assistance Center, the fruit and perishable good. Um, they're always in need of those supplies, especially during this COVID outbreak. Next week, June 16th, we have Katie Spotts. Uh, I think a lot of you, uh, remember her. She was the youngest person to row across the Atlantic Ocean. And, uh, she's now in the Coast Guard. She's part of the water conservation. She has all kinds of things to update us on with what she's been doing with her busy life. So I think, uh, uh, it'll be another great speaker for us next week. Uh, June 19th, we have our board meeting and please keep June 30th, uh, on your calendar. A Rotary meeting June 30th will be the installation of our officers. Uh, so please don't miss that. Uh, we want to, uh, thank and, uh, congratulate all our new officers, uh, on June 30th. Um, I think that's it. Uh, John, did you have anything to say by any chance?
No. Steve, I got nothing to say today. You did a great job. Thank you. Thank you Jenny.
Yeah, I have, I have something Steve.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't know if you guys talked about Todd Stewart before I logged on or not, but if you didn't know, Todd, um, has prostate cancer and he was due to have, uh, surgery today. However, long story short, he went in for a COVID test on Sunday. The, the test broke on the way to the lab, so he had to have another test yesterday. When he went in for surgery today, they had him all strapped up, ready to go. Um, and the, the COVID test hadn't come back yet. So they have to wait. They had to send him home um, and reschedule the surgery for, uh, Thursday. He expects to be, um, out of work here for a few months. I think the first several days are the most, uh, serious part of the rehabilitation. So just keep him in your thoughts, um, if you would. And if you want to drop him an email or a note, I'm sure that he would appreciate it.
What hospitals he at Joe?
I don't know. And again, he's not there yet. He's at, uh, he's at home right now, but I don't know where he's having the surgery John.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it Joe. We did make a mention, a, a short mention on that during our invocation, after the invocation. Uh, uh, John had brought me aware of it earlier today. So, thank you for the update and, uh, certainly hope that COVID test comes back negative for him so I can get this out of the way. Thank you.
Kathy needs to talk.
I heard back from, I heard back from Joyce. She said, thank you for thinking of us. We do not accept car seats, no space, and they do expire, believe it or not. We are not taking clothing right now, not enough space since we're making up prepackaged bags for our clients and it's curbside only. They do not come inside. Fresh produce such as carrots, onions and celery would be wonderful. Grace and peace, Joyce.
Yes, and, and just to elaborate on that a little bit, I think I'd mentioned it, uh, at least a month ago. They, uh, they had just bought a brand new big freezer, um, with the glass doors on it because Costco was donating their, their fruit. If it was just a week old, it was still good fruit. And they, and they were just getting a ton of this. So they, they, they bought this brand new freezer for, well, because of COVID and because of Costco running out of everything, they're not getting that food anymore. They're not getting the fresh food. All right. So this is why, boy, if, if you want to donate anything, if you're going to the store, just grab a bag of oranges and drop it off to them. Uh, they, because they said the people were just loving the fresh, you know, it's one thing having the perishable canned goods, but the fresh fruit was just a huge, huge hit for everybody. So please consider that. All right. Anybody else?
Eva, um, some of you might not have heard that, um, Russ Haas, our former school superintendent passed away. And there, his op is in the cleveland.com and there is a service this Saturday. Uh, but Russ was very, um, committed to the Nerdonia Health Committee, uh, Community and, and did a great job, Joe. I don't know if you knew, knew him at all, but he did a great job as superintendent. He was also, after he left Nerdonia, he went to the Cogga Valley Career Center with superintendent there for, what, about nine years, Bill?
Close to it.
Yeah, so he, he served both districts and he, he was a phenomenal individual. So, uh, a strong loss. So very active in our, he wasn't a Rotarian, but very active with our club.
Thank you Peggy. So please keep him in your prayers also. Yes Bruce. Hey, by, by the way, welcome Bruce.
Well, thank you. Uh, and again, I wish you guys weren't meeting at the same time as Bedford. Uh, they're going through a couple of little extra struggles and you guys are doing great. So, I have to handhold them first and then I get to come handhold you guys. Uh, Jenny, I'm sorry I didn't get to hear your part of the presentation. Uh, I'm glad that, uh, it's been recorded. So, um, be able to follow up on some of the stuff that, that you're offering. Uh, but I wanted to mention about Katie Spotts, uh, your next week program. She spoke at our club, Chagrin Highlands Beachwood Club about two years ago. And we were able to, because she was in person, uh, purchase her book. And, uh, you know, we think we're going through a lot of isolation, uh, with the COVID stuff. Boy, Katie really had a journey. In addition to, to just rowing across the ocean, that self-isolation, uh, aspect of that, uh, is really phenomenal. She is a, she's a wonderful person. And that's going to be a great program tomorrow. So I may tell Bedford to go miss me next week. I'll be here with you guys.
Bruce is right.
And I see Amanda is actually holding up her book. She spoke at our club a couple of years ago too. And apparently Amanda got her book. So there it is. Uh, Katie Spotts, Just Keep Rowing. So, is that the book you were talking about Bruce?
Absolutely, yes.
I, I have the book also.
I think Pixar stole it with, uh, uh, Nemo and Dory, but, uh, same idea.
Steve, if you want, I'll reach out to Katie and ask her if she can maybe send me some books that we can, uh, get out to the members.
That would be fantastic. Thanks John.
Because it is a very good book. Thank you Bruce.
Perfect. Anybody else?
We have a late joiner at the meeting here. Her name is Shelby.
Well, she's better looking.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
My dogs growing up, um, their name was, one was Shelby. Cute name.
I'm very disappointed that Debbie and Amanda doesn't have Rebel in the background over there, a German Shepherd. Maybe he can ju, maybe he can join the next meeting.
Hey Joe, are you doing your, um, thing at one today?
Yes.
That's a yes.
Yes, I am. One o'clock.
Okay.
Okay. Let's all share in the, uh, four-way test. Of the things we think, say or do. First is it the truth?
Second. Better friendships.
Well, thanks again. The meeting's now adjourned. I appreciate everybody for coming and joining us. That was a fun meeting. We had a great speaker and for all of you that came in late, missed it. Uh, uh, look for Julie's post and, uh, you can see a review of, uh, she's gonna add all the boring stuff out, but, uh, all of you.
Not boring, just not, you know.
Jenny's stuff, so.
Yeah.
Thanks again, everybody. Really appreciate everyone joining us. I will be sending everyone update for next week's meeting. Thanks.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.